Out here.
This meeting is being recorded.
Out here in the holler.
At least you're not in the school parking lot.
That's true. That is true. So as I was being asked earlier, you can all just kind of say a prayer and keep your fingers crossed and knock on wood that our connection stays up. Okay? All right. Well, again, welcome to you all. As I indicated in an email, if you're able to stay beyond eight o'clock tonight, we'll go until eight thirty, no later, but I included an extra article about culture that I've already heard one person is primed to speak to. So she may have had she may have had a different take on the article than I did, but we'll find out. All right. Let's um, let's share the unison statement, the compelling vision statement together in unison. And if you allow me, I'd like to begin our time of discussion with prayer. Together as the Church of the Brethren, we will transform a nation and relationship. To move us more to build a culture of calling and equipping disciples who are innovative, adaptable, and fearless. You know, I just had a funny thought as we were reading that for the last time together in this context. Kind of reminded me of Acts two where everybody was speaking all at once.
Like Pentecost.
Something like that, George. Yes. Can we pray? God, we thank you for this glorious day that we have experienced, and we thank you for the gift of it. God, we are grateful for this time of study that we have been sharing in together. Lord, I am grateful, I'm sure, along with all of the participants, for the way that you have been speaking, the things that you would have us hear, the things that you would have us know, and Lord, the things that your Spirit would have us do. As we continue to study and conclude it tonight, Lord, it's not the end, but Lord, really sort of a launching pad. God, as we continue to experience and perhaps experiment, and Lord, adventure us a little bit more about what it means to be Jesus in your neighborhood. So God, may your Holy Spirit be free as we share and discuss this evening in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Hey Luke.
Hey Kathy.
Hey.
If you will take that same document that we just shared the vision statement from and turn to page ten. Actually, let me rephrase that. I'd like to revisit page nine just briefly. Around the word culture. And I will just read for a little bit if you will follow along. As we explore what the word culture indicates in this vision statement, we will reorient the entire nature and being of our denomination around a missional outwardly focused mindset. To this end, we call every element of our denominational system, the Ministry and Mission Board, the Annual Conference Agencies, Districts, and all congregations to realign their language, their norms, their beliefs, symbols, values, and priorities around an external focus to reach persons for Jesus Christ and His other way of living. We will create a culture of empowerment that encourages and equips the local church to reach persons with the comprehensive message of salvation declaring Jesus Christ as Lord of all life. It is understood that such a kingdom emphasis summons congregations to respond prophetically, systemically, and globally, even while reaching out locally. We recognize such a refocus will require loss, but claim the biblical hope that as some things die, there is nevertheless the promise of new life. We further reaffirm such rebirth as a gift of the Holy Spirit. Thus, we recommit to a renewed denominational language of dependence on God's provision and the sufficiency of Jesus Christ. Moving now towards the bottom of the page, calling and equipping. It has been said that God doesn't call the equipped, but that God equips the called. Within the Church of the Brethren, we reaffirm the priesthood of all believers. Therefore, as disciples of Jesus Christ, we are called to partner in God's ongoing work of redemption. Further, we can trust that God, through the power of the Holy Spirit, will equip us individually and as a community, and all we need to do God's will. With all we need to do God's will. However, that doesn't mean it isn't important for us to actively call and equip people to lead us in special ways. As we embark on this journey into our neighborhoods to live and share the radical transformation and the holistic peace of Jesus Christ with grace and with humility, it is incumbent upon us to be attentive to the movement of the Holy Spirit in our own lives and in the lives of our neighbors, to discern the God-given gifts in one another as well as in ourselves, and to call out those among us who can lead us into our neighborhoods and to partner with God in equipping our faith communities through teaching, prayer, communal study of Scripture, and a consistent faithful openness to what God is calling us to do and be. I want to go back to the previous page and just highlight a little bit what's in that little quote there at the bottom of page ten. It isn't just about leadership development, and it isn't just about the missional stance of a few. It is about discipleship formation. It is about nurturing a missional stance among all of our people. Bottom of page ten.
Oh, in the bubble.
In the bubble. Bottom of eleven, sorry, bottom of page eleven. Being called and equipping disciples who are innovative, adaptable, and fearless. Discipleship connects not only the head, learning and growing in faith and knowledge, and the heart, allowing us to feel the needs of those around us. It also connects to our hands, challenging us to be the hands of feet and feet of Jesus Christ in this world. Consider the disciples who walked with Jesus Christ and the radical manner in which they lived out their call. They interacted with outcasts. They engaged others in unique ways, and they were molded and shaped into evangelists, encouragers, empathizers, and those who empowered others. Even in the first century, these radical disciples changed the way people thought about life, faith, and community. Men and women together demonstrated a new hope found only in Jesus Christ. To be disciples in this century, we need look no further than those first disciples and the cloud of witnesses that came after them. Disciples through the years were fearless in their pursuit of Jesus Christ. They were risk takers, seeking opportunities to let go of their needs and surrender to the call of Jesus in their lives. They had the courage to share the holistic peace and radical transformation that Jesus Christ offered. At each step of histories, history, excuse me, disciples were innovative in sharing this transformation and peace in a constantly evolving world. New ways of connecting, sharing the gospel, and building a community change with every generation. Like the disciples who preceded us, we need to be adaptable in both the means by and opportunities in which we share that hope. In a fractured culture, we must be courageous and discerning of new ways to proclaim Jesus Christ in order to passionately live out Christ's call for our neighborhoods and our world. Amen. Jenny, if you would be willing, we'd like to hear what Ephesians four, one to sixteen has to say to us this evening.
Okay. I therefore, a prisoner for the Lord, beg you to lead a life worthy of the calling to which you have been called, with all holiness and meekness, with patience for bearing one another in love, eager to maintain the unity of the Spirit in the bond of peace. There is one body and one spirit, just as you were called to the one hope that belongs to your call, one Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God and Father of us all, who is above all and through all and in all. But grace was given to each of us according to the measure of Christ's gift. Therefore, it is said, when He ascended on high, He led a host of captives, and He gave gifts to men. In saying, He ascended, what does it mean? But that He had also descended into the lower parts of the earth. He who descended is He who also ascended far above all the heavens, that He might fill all things. And His gifts were that some should be apostles, some prophets, some evangelists, some pastors and teachers, for the equipment of the saints, for the work of ministry, for filling up, for building up the body of Christ, until we all attain to the unity of the faith and of the knowledge of the Son of God, to mature manhood, to the measure of the stature of the fullness of Christ, so that we may no longer be children tossed to and fro and carried about with every wind of doctrine, by the cunning of men, by their craftiness in deceitful wiles. Rather, speaking the truth in love, we are to grow up in every way into Him who is the head into Christ, from whom the whole body joined and knit together by every joint with which it is supplied. When each part is working properly, makes bodily growth and up builds itself in love.
Thank you, Jenny.
That's a doozy.
That's a doozy. It's a long passage, long passages. Thank you for staying with it. And because it was a long passage, I'd like to just ask, just kind of, just kind of popcorn it out. What, 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 what one word or phrase really spoke to you as you're reading this passage?
I will say verse four. There is one body and one spirit, just as you were called to the one hope of your calling. I'm sorry. Continues into verse five. One Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God and Father of all, who is above all and through all and in all.
Thanks, Jenny. Can you say, you want to say a bit more about why that's, why that spoke?
Well, it's, it's so encompassing. It's, God is in us in all ways and around us in all ways. It's just, we're all one. It sort of goes with, we're all God's children. We're all one in Christ.
Amen. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Others? Thanks, Jenny.
I think verse seven and then verse sixteen, verse seven says, each one of us has a special gift.
Can you all hear, Beth? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then verse sixteen says, as each part does its own special work. So we've each been gifted, and there's something for each one to do.
Okay. Thank you, Beth. Kathy?
No.
Okay. I, I was following along in the Message paraphrase. And this particular Bible I have does not have verses, numbers of verses. But it talks about our being in Christ after all these gifts have been distributed, all the named gifts have been, that are being distributed. And it reads this way, until we're all moving rhythmically and easily with each other, efficient and graceful in response to God's Son, fully mature adults, fully developed within and without, fully alive like Christ. That just, Peterson really kind of amplifies those words there for me.
Eric? Similarly, I was following along in the Message, and the same verses that Jenny Waring highlighted, I'd just like to reemphasize verse four and five from the Message.
Okay, please.
You are all called to travel on the same road and in the same direction. So stay together, both outwardly and inwardly.
Thanks, Wendy. Yeah.
Hey Wendy?
Yeah.
You muted, Jenny.
Sorry. I also like this verse above that, it would be verse, end of verse one and beginning of verse two in the Message, which talks about with all humility and gentleness, with patience and bearing one another in love. What does the Message say about that?
Oh, again, it's a little hard to find that exact scripture, but I think I know about where it is. So this is, I think, like verse two. I want you to get out there and walk, better yet, run. On the road, I'd called you to travel. I don't want any of you sitting around on your hands. I don't want anyone scrolling off down some path that goes nowhere, and mark that you do this with humility and discipline.
Amen. Amen. Yeah. Good. Good. One, one, one last call here. Any other, any other reflections, words, phrases, verses? Could I get somebody to read the focus statement, please, that's in the study guide here for this evening? Right under the Scripture passage, the Scripture reference.
Sure, I will.
Okay.
Calling and equipping disciples for the strengthening of the body of Christ is the work of the community. Ephesians four, one through sixteen, which Jenny West read, characterizes the Christian community as egalitarian, sharing of diverse gifts to bind us together in unity in Christ. Within call stories throughout Scripture, as well as brethren history and our own stories and histories, we discover that faith communities must listen deeply for what makes each person come alive with deep gladness, expect surprises regarding who might be called and to what work, and provide support in the form of encouragement, mentoring, opportunities to grow, and prayer.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you. Good summation. So discussion, and please feel free to respond to any of these three questions or two, whatever there are here. I think there's three. What are some of the roles, tasks, or jobs that need doing? And again, it's going to be kind of from your individual or perhaps from a more corporate perspective, but what are some of the roles, tasks, or jobs that need doing both within our congregation and in the wider community to build up the body of Christ? Let's, let's just start there. Let's just take that one first. What are some of the roles, tasks, or jobs that need doing, both within the congregation and the wider community that will continue to build up the body of Christ?
Well, a strong pastoral leader.
Okay. Thank you for that.
The work that the deacons do, or especially caring for those who can no longer participate but are members of our congregation, caring for them.
Okay. Caregiving.
You know, when I, I thought about this recently, how many persons in our church are involved with caregiving? Someone who's infirm, someone who's young, but somebody who's in need. There are just lots of people in this congregation who are caregivers.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for that, Vicky. Yes.
I think we need role models, because even though we've studied this, Jesus in the neighborhood, the actual putting it into practice, I think is somewhat amorphous. It's sort of cloudy as to what that actually means and feels like. I mean, theoretically, it sounds good. We all want to do it. But to actually do it, I think is a little tougher, and it'd be nice to have some role models who show us how to do that.
Harry, I'm just, I want to put a, I want to put a word to that, if I may. When you say role models, are you thinking like mentors?
Well, either both. I mean, a mentor obviously would be helpful. But I was thinking more in terms of an example.
Okay, okay.
But mentor would be fun.
Okay. All right.
Just to learn what to do.
Okay.
Do you have an example of, of something like that in some circumstance to talk what you're talking about?
Pardon?
Just so I can understand, when you say like a role, are you talking about caring for, let's see, what was the question, within the congregation or within the wider communicate, community? Which one of those are you talking about?
Well, I'm thinking in terms of how do we actually reach out to our neighborhood? And how do we do this, all this, this compelling vision is asking us to do in our neighborhood? I mean, we've never done that, really, other than helping at Highland Park School. I mean, we've had some, we've done some little things like sing Christmas carols and give out batteries, but to me, those have been pretty ineffective. Of course, I don't really know how it affects people. So, you know, I'm just searching for what it is that we're going to do.
Well, this reparations book group, pastoral group, and beginning book study on Friday, I think that is really beginning to be a, a building up in the community. It's building up of relationship. I don't know that we are leading anyone to Christ because they're already there, but we are building community.
Yeah. I, I think I saw someone else wanting to, I think, was it you, Lori? Did you have something you wanted to offer?
Well, as far as the community, I was thinking of the, oh, I can't remember the name of it now, but Luke, the splitting of the wood and giving the wood out. That, to me, is a task, a job that's important in the community.
Yeah. Yeah. As Harry was asking the question, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good question. I'm wondering, this is going to sound, I'm just going to say it this way. I'm wondering if it isn't as simple as just asking God, asking the Spirit on a daily basis, what would you have me be today? Who would you have me be today? What would you have me do today? Where would you, where would you have me be? Yeah. What, what new thing would you have me do today? And I think that's, that begins to get at some of the uncertainty about what, you know, if we're, if I'll just personally, if I'm open, if I, if I ask God that, and I'm open to that, I really believe God's going to put a person or situation or something in front of me that's going to provide an opportunity for some ministry, some word.
Chuck? And Harry, don't you do some of that with your work?
I think the key here is neighborhood. We need to stick to that one word and try to script, define it and what it means.
Becky, I don't want to disagree. I think, I think as we've talked at the Witness Team, I think we, we do want to be able to define what our neighborhood is as far as the location around the church. But, but I think this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think neighborhood is just the whole, is the context in which we find ourselves.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get that feeling from our Witness Team meeting, but that doesn't mean.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that came from the Witness Team meeting, but I'm, I'm thinking in my own personal understanding of neighborhood, you know, another way of looking at neighborhood is wherever I am, or whatever situation I find myself in.
Well, that puts a whole new picture and a whole new light on the focus statement, I think.
Okay. Well, thank you. Others?
Yes.
Oh, George, I mean, Chuck's been trying to say something here, I think. Now, I'll get to you, George.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that I really love the Howard Thurman quote down in the middle of the page there, because he says, ask yourself what makes you come alive and go do that.
Yeah.
And so I think in whatever context we're working, we need to think about not doing something because we feel guilty or because we feel, gosh, no one else is going to do it, so I better do it. But if it doesn't, you really need to go for those things that make you feel alive that that's your passion about, because then you'll be most effective. And that can be in a variety of settings, whether it's, whether it's actually meeting people in the neighborhood or working with kids at the school, or, you know, whatever it is that kills you is going to make you more effective.
And make us authentic.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Chuck and Wendy. Yes, George.
Yes, as, as most of you have probably noticed, we have a regular visitor at our church that sleeps outside of our door here at the kitchen. And I've encountered him a couple of different times and talked with him. And he is very, sort of an interesting fellow. He's very unoffensive, and he's very neat. And he has generated within me a desire that we're an inner-city church here in downtown Roanoke, and we have various homeless ministry organizations around us. And I feel that we have some responsibility to help these organizations that deals with this population of people. I would like to see us engaged in some of these, and most of these organizations are run with volunteers. And that's just, I guess that's all I would say about that.
All right, George. Appreciate that insight. Thank you. Thank you. So that we, yes, Marilyn.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate this new aspect of worship of having a person share something that's meaningful to them. I think, I guess, when I think of Jesus ministry, I don't think of Jesus saying, now form a committee so that you can do this or that. You know, He was sending out disciples maybe two by two. But I, I guess I feel Jesus in the neighborhood means kind of what you were saying, Eric, I guess. With our own gifts and in our own context as individuals, too, what can we do? To me, it's not completely what the church as a whole can do, but it is where we find ourselves involved in, in the community.
All right.
That we can, that we can be ministers.
Amen. Thank you, Marilyn. And it reminds me of a joke. For God so loved the world, God did not create a committee.
Yeah, right. Amen.
Yeah. Let's, I'm going to ask us to move on, and I'm going to jump down to the next bullet point where it says further discussion. Still looking at this Ephesians passage. And it, the statement, and then a question, consider our, it says your own, but let's make it personal. Consider our congregation. Consider Central's culture of calling and equipping disciples. How do we measure up? I'm, I'm going to prime the pump. I'm, I'm going to prime the pump a little bit. I think we do, I think we do, I think we have a semblance of calling from my perspective. We, you know, we have a nominating committee, a gift, I like better the Gifts to Serment Committee that looks at people, sisters and brothers in the, in the life of our faith community and invites them to serve. That's a, that's a call in, in my, in my perspective. I don't know, I don't know, maybe I've not been a central long enough and COVID certainly hasn't helped the process. But how, how well do we work at equipping one another when it comes to our calling? That's just, yes, Lori?
I think of faith in action in this regard. A group of people came together with various gifts individually. We weren't capable at the time of doing anything, or some were probably, but
Right.
I wasn't. And because there were, there was support, there was encouragement, there were specific tasks that you were asked to do because somebody had your back. That to me is equipping and supporting. And so the members of the group reached out in ways that they hadn't before. And maybe were afraid to do before, but receiving important guidance from each other.
That's a good example. That's a good example. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Are there other ways that we work at equipping? Those, those we call, or as we are called, as I am called, you know? I, I think that's why I said COVID has kind of messed with it. You know, Bible, you know, this is, is this not a process of equipping one another in a sense? You know, our Wired Word Study School, Sunday School Lesson, Kevin's upcoming Bible study, other Bible studies. I mean, I think those all, all have a, all have a means of equipping us. They are equipping agents, if you will.
I get, I guess, I guess I think, I guess I think that we would be a stronger congregation, of course, I'm, I'm relatively new here. We would be a stronger congregation through things like this sharing and worship from individuals. I mean, I, I think it's kind of hard to get to know people in this congregation beyond what you see on Sunday morning, for me anyway. And I don't know, maybe speaking of worship is not the main thing, but you know, as I look at the people around here, I know kind of what they're, the people on the Zoom and here, I kind of know what people are doing connected with our church, but I don't know what people are doing in other ways. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
I don't, and I don't know how, what would be an appropriate or comfortable way to do that. You know, if you're a Baptist, you get up and give a testimony every once in a while.
Right.
But brethren don't tend to do that. And yet I think that kind of personal knowledge of what other people are doing inspires me at least to think, okay, now what am I doing? You know, how, what could I do with the gifts I have?
Yeah. All right, Marilyn, thank you. Any other thoughts or reflections? Well, in the interest of our time, well now, let's, let's don't, let's, no, okay, I, let me back up. I'm going to repeat myself. In the interest of our time, I'd like for us to jump to the next scripture. 1 Corinthians 9, 19 to 23, and Lori has volunteered to read that one for us. Lori?
For though I am free from all men, I have made myself a slave to all, that I might win the more. And to the Jews I became as a Jew, that I might win Jews, to those who are under the law, as under the law. Though not being myself under the law, that I might win those who are under the law. To those who are without law, as without law, though not having suffered the law of God, but under the law of Christ, that I might win those who are without law. To the weak I became weak, that I might win the weak. I have become all things to all men, that I may by all means have saved some. And I do all things for the sake of the gospel, that I may become a fellow partaker of it.
Thank you, Lori. Again, like we did the first one, what word or phrase or particular verse just speaks?
Can we hear how that reads in the message?
I was going to do that in a moment, yeah.
Those first few verses were hard to follow.
Emily?
I kind of like some elaboration on what it says because it seems very redundant to me.
All right, well, my, my beloved over here beside me saying, I'd like to hear what the message has to say. So here's what the message has to say. It'll be a bit of an elaboration.
All right.
These are the same verses in the message. Even though I am free of the demands and expectations of everyone, I have voluntarily became a servant to any and all in order to reach a wide range of people. And then they get named. Religious, nonreligious, meticulous moralists, loose living immoralists, the defeated, the demoralized, whoever. I didn't take on their way of life. I kept my bearings in Christ, but I like this. But I entered their world and I tried to experience things from their point of view. I've become just about every sort of servant there is in my attempts to lead those I meet into a God saved life. I did all this because of the message, message being Jesus. I didn't want to just talk about it. I wanted to be in on it. Yeah.
And in is emphasized. I wanted to be in on it.
It is, it is emphasized, yes.
You know, this, this passage in a message reminds me of the story of St. Patrick. When Patrick went to Ireland and he lived amongst the people and the, and the moralist and non-moralist and nonreligious, and he, he adapted to their customs and brought Christianity to an entire culture.
Yeah. Thank you, George. Yeah, Vicki.
It seems to me that this is just about building relationships with people. That our neighborhood is making relationships with people. Maybe that's too simplistic.
No, no, I don't think so.
There, there was a time a few years ago when I realized, I, I guess I was quite involved in church, but I didn't have involvement anywhere else except church and my family. Even, even in my, my neighborhood right here.
Yeah.
And I realized that I was missing opportunities and, and missing relationships that I ought to be making, so. I, I think it's just about relationships.
I think it's a huge part of it, Sister. Thank you for naming that. Agreed personally.
And I want to say, Harry has been talking about relationships since I can hear, remember us talking about anything to do in our community. He has always said, it's about relationships. And I agree, and I just want to share real quickly that I had lunch today with Reverend Amy Hodge and with Reverend Marilyn Hextall, black female pastors. One is St. Paul United Methodist Church and one is the AME Church, but I'm not going to remember the name of Amy's church. But anyway, I didn't know these women. I'd met one of them and we had a delightful lunch and built a relationship.
Let's hear from some others.
I think the challenge that we sometimes find, and it echoes a little bit with what Vicki was saying, is what are the circles of our engagement? So, so it, you know, for, for me, you know, earlier we were talking about Howard Thurman's quote, what makes you come alive? So for me, some of that is gaming. So by being connected to the gaming community, I'm meeting people outside of the church, circles and spheres of influence. And the majority of them know of my calling as a pastor. So some of them have reached out to me in other avenues, maybe not specifically for prayer, but for someone to talk to.
Yeah.
I think that's what Paul's getting at too, and this particular passage is going out and meeting with those people who don't have Jewish or, you know, whatever background it is that he's engaging with. And, you know, certainly the first time I walked through the doors, you know, everybody's kind of like, okay, it's just another guy in the building. But as I got to know them and they got to know me, they realized who I was and I, who they were.
Amen, amen. I want to continue on here. I want to read a little bit of the focus statement that is right below this 1 Corinthians passage. I'm just going to read the last, about the last half. Paul, Paul had a gift for relating to people. In his letter to the church at Corinth, we see the lengths that Paul would go to see, that he would go to share the hopeful message of Jesus with anyone. Paul's life was spent growing and nurturing disciples. He took Jesus's instruction to deliver his message to a broad and expansive audience seriously. As a result, he had to think on his feet in innovative and adaptive and fearless ways. Those words sound familiar, don't they? Paul became many things for the sake of the message. Now, if you go to the next page, a couple really good questions I'd like for us to discuss a bit. What are the benefits? And what are the pot, of adapting and, and innovating like Paul was describing here? What are the benefits, but are there any pitfalls? Paul said he became like others. But.
I think that if as a church we are overly engaged as a group, that prevents us, or at least me, from having time to do anything but church. I mean, it takes time to be in other organizations and have other responsibilities. And it's a, it's a, it's a hard balance, I think, to, to know what is too much for a small congregation like ours to do and what is, needs to be too much because that pushes us to do more. Anyway.
Thanks, Marilyn. No, appreciate that. I, I think, I'm just going to, I don't have a personal example at hand, but I think, you know, one of the pitfalls might be and very, could be is entering into a, a different arena or culture to try to make a difference for Christ, but to maybe lose one's identity or get kind of sucked in. I'm, I'm thinking, and this is maybe not a good example, but I'm thinking of undercover police officers who get so, and so get so involved in their undercover work that they lose sight of their mission, that they lose sight of who they are. And I think, you know, Paul, the message translation of this passage from 1 Corinthians 9, you know, Paul, Paul, it makes it pretty clear that Paul was willing to meet with any and all people to build those relationships, but he says, I kept my bearings in Christ. I entered their world and I tried to experience things from their point of view. But, you know, I, I kept my, I kept my own identity in Christ.
There's, historically, there's a significant element of Christianity who feels like the only way they can be true to God's teachings are to separate themselves from the world.
Yep.
There is a very, historically in the third and fourth centuries, there were a lot of Coptic monks, et cetera, and in Mission, you know, in Dark Ages, that's, that kind of thing. And then sort of the opposite is people who go to bars, et cetera, because I think that's where the people are. And then, like you said, you know, sometimes it's hard to keep your bearings when you're immersed in a culture that's really very non-Christian. It also reminds me of there's some, have been some examples of lawyers who had a pretty high clientele of drug person, you know, people who use drugs, criminals, and then ended up getting prosecuted themselves for, for doing drugs. And you kind of wonder, you know, well, how, how'd that happen?
Yeah.
If they would know the dangers of that culture, that they were representing people who were being sort of eaten up by it.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Harry. That's, yes, Chuck, please.
I, I would appreciate that.
That one of the things that can happen, yeah, you have to be grounded, but sometimes when you enter into a different world or different framework, different culture, sometimes you can discover new things about Christianity that you never thought before. New ways of thinking that maybe hadn't occurred to you. Or recognizing messages of Christ that were there, but you didn't realize they were there. And, and this may be
That's a good point.
Not a great example, but George mentioned St. Patrick, but he entered into a community, a Celtic community that worshipped nature. And there, there's certainly passages in the Bible and Christianity where we discover that we are to, we are to worship nature. We are to include all living things and as part of our faith. So you know, he may have been influenced a lot by that, that particular culture that we're not aware of or it came out later, so.
Yeah. Good, good. Helpful, Chuck. Yeah, appreciate that. How do churches still discussion top of page, top of our second page for this evening? How do churches like Paul, and we've kind of been talking about this a little bit, but maybe there's a bit more to be said. How do churches like Paul become all things to all people as a means of saving others while remaining loyal to the gospel? Maybe, maybe there's a bit more reflection around this yet.
I've been, I've been meeting with a woman who has a fatal brain disease for the last year or so. She called me, wanted me, I met her through Rotary. She called me, wanted to know if I'd be her spiritual companion. And of course, things are going downhill with her, but we've planned her memorial service. She wanted to make sure she did that. But she grew up in the church, but she really doesn't want anything to do, anything to do with religion in that service. And yet she's wanted me to be her spiritual advisor. So I think, you know, sometimes when we get in those situations, they're, they're complicated, but they, for me, they really caused me to think, you know, what kind of service, I mean, I'm, I'm used to doing funerals. I could easily done a Christian funeral for with no problem whatsoever. But to create a service, and I, I've had to do this before with weddings and without any prayers or, you know, any mention of God. I think when we get in those situations, it makes us stronger because I think when we get in those situations, it makes us stronger because we're forced out of the mold that we've gotten ourselves into.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I think Marilyn, what you're saying is it ties back into what Chuck was saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, and I wonder, and I wonder as you said, it kind of forces us to look at things differently. I wonder if it's, you know, I think sometimes we look too narrowly at how we think Jesus sees things or people.
Yeah.
Too narrowly. We put limits around Jesus. Kevin?
So, well, I was thinking in terms of um, you know, uh, the, the uh uh opening prayer during a city council meeting um or something of that nature where, you know, um you're, you're asked to offer a blessing of some sort uh within a public sphere where you don't know who anybody is uh in the audience, so to speak. And knowing that there's at least, you know, one Unitarian, and I believe one Muslim on the city council. So how do you phrase a prayer um that can acknowledge uh universality of God, that we're all God's people created in God's image. Um. And so that, you know, kind of echoing a little bit with Marilyn, it does stretch you, it pushes you a little bit to think about the types of words or phrases you're using. In terms of a public setting like that, where it's not a um it's not a public Christian gathering where, you know, if you're organizing it as a church or as a interfaith community or as an ecumenical community, you know, the, the language can be a little bit more familiar. Uh, but I think in those public settings, you know, it is challenging to think in terms of um what words you do or don't use without falling into the trap of uh betraying um that, you know, as a follower of Jesus, that you're not betraying that um particular um uh witness. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I remember being, I remember being shocked when I was on the staff of a Methodist church when I was in seminary, that pastor at events like funerals or weddings, if the Lord's Prayer was used, he would say before that prayer, if you are Christian, I invite you to join me in the Lord's Prayer. And if you are not and have another faith, or uh you could silently pray in your own faith or or have a time of silence. And the first time I heard him say that, I thought that was shocking. Because, well, who wouldn't just join, the, the words were in the, in the program, who wouldn't just join in? But I started that practice too, because
Yeah.
um, not to separate us as Christians, but to recognize that was a Christian prayer and invite people to pray their own prayers if, if that be the case.
Being respective of other people, other faith traditions, yes.
So perhaps one of, that's one of the pitfalls.
Yeah, Beth, go ahead.
Um, if we back up to the, the question about the pitfalls to watch out for, um. I think we, we need to be careful not to think that we know all the right language that we know.
Our way is the right way.
Yeah. We have a corner on the truth or that kind of thinking.
Okay, okay.
Just recking, you know, being cognizant of the fact that not everybody's operating from the same faith base that I am, or you are, or the church.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But there, it still demands relationship.
Yes.
Regardless.
Yeah, yeah. I have, right at eight o'clock, um, I invite us at the beginning to go until eight thirty, but recognizing that some might feel a need to exit at eight o'clock uh is um, so if you do, that's fine, uh, feel free, but before you go, or those of us who stay before we go on to a little different track here, um, Bob Eismer?
Yes.
I'm going to ask people to do what's written on the paper in front of us. Write a list of ways, I'm inviting all of us, that includes me, writing a list of ways that you see our faith community being adaptable or innovative in reaching people in our community or in the larger world. And the, the lesson said, use creative and vivid adjectives. I don't care what kind of words you use. Um, but write a li, I mean, I, I think we need, I think we, you know, we, we've been talking and discussing, we need to, we need to put a little action behind it. So I'm inviting us, I'm encouraging us to, to make that list. However made is might be one thing, might be two, might be ten, uh, and submit them to Bob as leadership team chair. And Bob, what I'm, what I'm just thinking, and I, I apologize for not giving you this heads up earlier, um, but depending on what y'all get or what leadership team gets, maybe parcel those out to um individuals or teams or, you know, raise them up as examples and look for some, look, ask, call people, call us out.
Okay, that, they can do that uh through email or handing it to me in written form at church, whichever is the most convenient.
Okay, all right. And I, and, and, and I did not overstep my boundaries with leadership team, did I?
No, kid, well, I, I guess I have been very quiet tonight because I'm having, I feel like George at leadership team on Monday. My internet is going in and out and a website has never done before.
All right.
I have not heard half of what's going on tonight.
Okay, okay.
But yes, uh, that's, that's, that's certainly a, a function of the leadership teams and coordinating an effort like that. So
All right, okay.
They can feel free to get those to me.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that.
Eric?
Yes.
Um, this is George. I have a request. I don't know when we're gonna close or how we're gonna close, but the hymn that we have in our uh material here,
Uh huh.
rather than reciting that together, which is pretty garbled.
Yeah.
We haven't, we have enough musicians here. Can we take turns singing a verse individually? I will take the first verse.
All right.
And, and Wendy, you can take the second verse.
All right.
And who, anybody can sing.
You just got volunteered.
So, uh, uh, again, I'm not proposing that we end now, but I just thought.
No, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So George verse one, Wendy got volunteered to verse two. Anybody?
Nancy for verse three?
Who?
Nancy.
Nancy.
Is she here? She's, she's muted. Oh, I see her. Okay. You're muted.
Verse three?
Yeah, do I know this song?
Yeah, you'll know it by verse three.
You'll know it. I'll start it.
By verse three.
All right. So we got Nancy for verse three. Good suggestion, George. All right. Last but not least, verse four.
Are we?
Chuck and Lori as a duet. Becky and Harry as a duet.
Hello, Harry and Becky.
We can't see them. There they are.
Hey, Harry?
Harry will have to swallow his dinner.
Eating.
If you'd like, I can play the piano so that person can sing sort of. It'll be a little off by a second or two.
All right.
Play the music.
One, two, four.
Nobody's volunteering for four.
One last call for four before I volunteer, Bev.
Go ahead and volunteer, Bev.
Volunteer, Bev.
Do it, Bev. Do it, Bev.
Go, Bev.
I don't, I don't need a piano. I don't know.
I prefer not a piano.
Okay, all right. I'm hearing at least from a couple people. Wendy, thank you for the offer, but they're saying no, no piano, so. All right, we, we will close with that. Um. Now, I'd like to, I'd like to direct our attention to this article from Richard Beck called Stop Sneering and Get the Work. Uh, I, I follow a guy by the name of Ryan Duaq, who is a Mennonite out of Canada. Ryan Duaq writes a a post or a blog or whatever you want to call it, called Rumbling's. And this article came out of his most recent um post that I read just yesterday. Um, and I want to tell you why I chose it. Because I've done my share of sneering. I look at some of the, I look at some of what people call off the wall music. You know what I mean? In the church, pray songs, you know, rather simple, simplistic, all about me kind of stuff. Uh, I've kind of sneered at that.
Jesus is my boyfriend. Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've kind of sneered at that. And I've, I've, you know, I've done my share of sneering and condemning Joel Osteen. The whole prosperity gospel thing, okay? And um what was the other one? Well, that's probably enough. I'm done confessing for now. But I, I want to read, I just want, I'm not want to read the whole article, and I trust that you have taken the time to read it. And I know Marilyn has because she's ready to, to enter into some discussion because she, she implied that earlier when we were gathering. Wesley, uh, Leslie Newbagen, and I've, I've read Leslie Newbagen, I know this guy. Uh, after years of working in India, he returned to the West. And when he got home, he was shocked. He found that the West had changed dramatically. The focus of forces of secularism had overtaken and overwhelmed the church. So Newbagen returned to what's called a post-Christian West. So being a missiologist, he began to think about the West as a missionary in his own, back in his own country. What does it mean to be a missionary in the modern world? How does the gospel get a hearing in a secular context? The last paragraph on that first page, I don't want to read it all, but he, he kind of envisions if Martian anthropologists came to Earth and they looked at this secular West then and now, um, we would probably think, wow, they would be so impressed with our technology. Well, no, they'd be, you guys are light years behind us. No, Newbagen argued, it would be, the Martians would uh most forcefully, would strike the emotions most forcefully would be about our culture and this fact value split. And I had to think about that. What does he mean by that? That no one in the modern world can tell you what the good is. Now just go to the next page if you would, please. Until our time, every culture in the history of the world existed to tell you what was good and what was bad. But our culture back, this is Beck now, we have a void. Phrased differently, we actually don't have a culture. And this argued Newbagen in his timeframe makes us a very strange tribe. If you understand the culture of the modern world, I'm in the second big paragraph on that second page. As Newbagen described, you'll immediately understand why Jordan Peterson, he's a Canadian psychologist. I'd never heard of him before I read this article. I looked him up today. Uh, he's becoming very popular amongst the more conservative elements uh of, of the world. Why Jordan Peterson and topical preaching has a broad appeal, their advice giving is inserting values into the void. And now Beck goes on, and this is what I, I really yeah, I felt this. I don't think I'm sharing a secret that Joel Osteen and his prosperity gospel is widely ridiculed and sneered at at university seminaries and among seminary educated pastors. Osteen is simply the worst, a theological embarrassment. And yet, if you're a pastor sneering at Osteen, I'm pretty confident his church is larger than yours. Why is that? Why is he so successful? Well, the answers you typically hear are Osteen's a huckster, people are gullible fools. Um, and Beck says, and this, he says, well, if you feel that way, you're a clueless missionary. And then he goes on to explain why he feels that way. He talks about this class that he teaches at Fuller Theological Seminary and how they visited homeboy industries uh for gang, uh, gang members to help them re-enter society as non-gang members. And um, that's Father Boyle's uh ministry that was founded years ago. So he took his tour in October, and it was led by a man in his fifties who had multiple felony convictions and had been in and out of prison for most of his adult life. He, he started to asking where we were from and about their interest in this ministry. Uh, we told him we were a seminary class at Fuller, and most everyone in the group was a pastor for a church, or I assume some were in preparation to be pastors. And, and this, uh, this guy who's in his fifties, been in a prison most of his life, says, I'm not very religious, but you know who my guy is? Joel Osteen. He's my guy. And he went on to talk about how impactful Joel Osteen had been in his life. So when, when they got back to the class, Beck asked the students, so what did you learn? Uh, to the person, we all wished we had churches that could speak to our guy. We all wished our churches could speak to this guy. So let me say this plainly for any of you who have sneered at Joel Osteen. So um, I've done my share of sneering. Joel Osteen could speak to this gang member and criminal and could change his life. Could you or I? And if we can't, maybe we should wipe the sneers off our faces and work at becoming better missionaries. And then he took, then he quotes Rob Bell, and Rob Bell um uh used to be a very, very strong conservative evangelical, and Rob Bell became more of a Unitarian universalist and, and, and in his book, popular books, as God wins. Bell observed that Osteen was parenting people who never had any parenting, or at least not any good parenting. Many people have never experienced a stable family where they heard constant and unconditional message of positivity, praise and encouragement. Most people never grew up hearing, you can do this, you got this, I believe in you. But you know who says that over and over? Do you know who believes in you? Joel Osteen. So kind of in conclusion, now I want to share a personal story. If we took the time to become better missionaries, we would immediately understand the appeal of Joel Osteen for our homeboy tour guide and for many who are struggling in the modern world. Every, folks need positivity and encouragement. This one talks about Peterson, but I don't want to spend a lot of time. You've had a chance to read this, I hope. He talks about Hillsong music and Jesus is my boyfriend music, as somebody said a moment ago. Um, I want to tell you a story and why this article spoke so much to me and why I wanted to share it with you and hear your thoughts. I think it really fits what we've been talking about here. I think I've shared with all of you that Bev and I like to hang out at Chaos Mountain Brewery. Now Kevin talked about gaming and the relationships that he's building that, that are forming there. Uh, that's been true for Bev and I at Chaos Mountain Brewing. You know, uh, folks knew who, know who I am. Once I started going, if, you know, I didn't come in and say, hey, I'm a pastor, da, 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 da. They just kind of figured it out as we got the, getting acquainted. And people have, people have talked to me and have kind of confided in me, as Kevin said, that he's finding at the game, game place. There, there's a fellow who has a food truck at Chaos almost probably three fourths of the time. I'll just say his first name. His name is Rick. We first met Rick guys, five, six years ago, or maybe seven, right around the brewery time they started, he started becoming food truck. Rick was rough, 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 crude, crude, crude. And got booted out of the military because he had a couple, he had lost a mother and a sister, I think, close together. And he, I don't know if he went AWOL or what, but he, no, he went psychotic. And so they kicked him out of the military. In the last, I'm gonna say in the last six months,
Six months to a year.
Six months to a year, Rick has had a transformation. We went to, we had, Chaos had a uh just an invited carry-in dinner for their regulars. And we went and Rick, Rick was there. And Rick, Rick was, Rick was a heavy drinker. Rick has quit drinking. Uh, I'm not saying it's right or wrong to drink, but Rick felt like he needed to quit drinking. So he has quit drinking. Rick has, and he was smoking weed, and he's quit doing that. And he's lost like over a hundred pounds. But what, but Rick took Bev and I aside at this, at this New Year's thing and began to tell us his story. He began to tell us how his life was being changed by this church in Alabama where he has family and how he had been going down there and he's going to be moved. and how he had been going down there, and he's going to be moving down there next month permanently. And he talks about the music, and guess what kind of music it is? Hillsong music. He talks about the past, he talks about the pastor who preaches out of the Bible, he preaches the word. You know, literal, I mean, he's, he's always a topical, you know, get at it. And, but Rick, Rick is on fire, Rick is alive, he's a different person. I have a lot of different musical tastes, I'm really glad we do a variety of music at Central. That's just me personally. And I really like Kevin's preaching. You know, I don't, I don't need Kevin telling me what I need to do and how I need to do it. But, you know, Joel Osteen, Hillsong music, Peterson, you know, they might be reaching people that we, we may not reach. And is that Jesus in the neighborhood? I'd like to think so. So, in the, end of Soapbox, I, I would just like to hear your reactions to the, to the article. And maybe you have some different reflections.
This is George. I remember one time at Brick Church, we had a fellow that was, was coming fairly often. And so as people show up at church and we start talking with them, naturally did the same thing, but I'll always start with something he said to me. I think maybe an invitation was given for joining the church, and, but, and, and I forget how he said it, but he said, he said, you know, the thing that bothers me about this church? People here are so intimidating. Now, and I, and I didn't ask any more questions, but since the individual told me that, I have to wonder, when we meet and come across people, how do we come across to them? Are we intimidating? Are we busybodies? Are we know-it-alls? Are we loud? How, we can never know how we come across to another fellow human being. And that taught me a lesson, that, that this fellow, I won't even reveal his name, he's not there now, but, but he, he, but he was honest enough to tell me that he liked our congregation, but he just felt like we were too intimidating for him.
Interesting. Nancy? It says you're not muted, but we can't hear you.
I think I had my Bible on my speaker, sorry.
Yeah, please, yeah, I'd like to hear what you have to say, Nancy.
I've kind of heard that said about Central. Because there are a lot of highly educated people in our congregation that some feel very intimidated of being in our congregation.
Thank you for sharing that.
Visitors or attenders?
Both.
Chuck?
I, I did want to quibble a little bit with, with the argument that every culture up until ours had some sort of existed to tell you what was good and what was bad. But we're avoid, we don't have a culture. You know, I, I, I'm not sure where he gets that, I mean, yeah, you, I guess you can look back on the 50s and say, oh yeah, that was a great culture. Because more people went to church, but a lot of hypocrites went to church, and a lot of people were racist and didn't, and didn't do anything for the civil rights era, and were bigots, so. Do you want racists and bigots telling you what's good and bad? I'm not sure.
No.
I'm, I'm not arguing with the fact that it's not, it's never good to be, to, to be sneering at people. But I'm not sure the, that assumption was right, and the, the fact that different preaching styles can reach different people, that's fine. I, I, I think, though, that we have to be careful in saying that whatever preaching style you use will accept that and validate it, because I certainly wouldn't validate. Just because Joel Osteen's preaching reaches a homeboy doesn't mean that I would agree with his view of Christianity.
Well, and I, yeah, I hear that and I agree with that, Chuck, yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, there, there's always a good lesson to say, don't sneer at people, and, and don't think you're better than them. But at the same time, I, I think you can't say, well, they must be doing something right because they have more people coming to their church.
Yeah.
I just don't buy that as a, as a measuring stick of success.
I have a
Thank you, Chuck, thank you. Go ahead, Kevin, please.
It's okay, when I graduated seminary, somebody gave me a little book, and it's about like that big, it's a little square book, maybe a little bigger than that, and it's called The Unauthorized Pastor Handbook. And it's little anecdotes, and it's kind of like, it reads almost like a daily devotional, it's like a different suggestion for every day. And one of the suggestions says, read the books and listen to the music that this particular article is referencing. Because even though you may not agree with it, somebody in your congregation is probably reading and listening to that music. So I think it kind of goes back a little bit to our earlier discussion about still being authentic to your understanding of the faith. And I've had, you know, plenty of people in my very short ministerial, professional time tell me that my theology is incorrect. And I would probably say that there are some who I would have probably said the same thing to. So I think that kind of goes to the whole rainbow spectrum of, you know, how God works in different people's lives. And echoing a little bit with what Chuck was saying, you know, somebody getting value from Joel Osteen. But it does remind us that, you know, we do need to be open and non-judgmental of perspectives that are brought to our attention, so.
Thank you, thanks for that, Kevin. Emily, did you have something, or just? Okay, well, your, your little circle lit up, or your little square lit up, I thought maybe you had something you wanted to say. Yeah, Jenny?
Say that perhaps this article is pointing out that we shouldn't be Jesus snobs, that, that Jesus works in many, many ways. And just because we may not agree with some of his theology, if he's preaching from the Bible and preaching Jesus words, and people are hearing Jesus words, that maybe we shouldn't be a Jesus snob.
Yeah. And, and I, you know, I, I just felt like this, I just kind of felt like this article, I'll get to you, Luke, I just felt like this article really kind of gets at what we've been, what we've been talking about here, you know, we've been talking, you know, Vicky said it earlier this evening about relationships, and, you know, people, people that we all know, people that we're going to be interacting with on a day-to-day basis. Who knows, you know, somebody's going to reach them, hopefully. You know, if they're struggling and they need some assistance, or they need a word, they need a loving hand, somebody. Yeah, Luke?
Sure, thanks, I appreciate, I, you know, I enjoyed reading through this, and maybe we laughed a couple of times, you know, stories about, you know, people being reached in different ways, I absolutely get. I just wanted to build on Chuck's comment about culture a little bit, which I think is an important one. You know, I would say our culture, you know, we have a very capitalistic culture, a very, a culture that, you know, talks a lot about individual freedoms and liberties. And I think in many ways, you know, the message of the Bible sort of pushes against that. And I think our church in many ways pushes against that, and it's more about community and relationships. So, you know, I, I struggle, you know, I appreciate Chuck naming that, because I sort of was bothered by it, but I didn't really think about it until Chuck named it there. But I just wanted to bring that up as a, you know, I think in some ways Joel Osteen and others sort of take advantage of the culture that exists, that generates the idea of money and capitalism, and appeals to people that way, so I just wanted to bring that up briefly.
Thank you for that, thank you for that. Marilyn? And then Bob?
I knew when I moved here, I was going to have to be a member of a brother and church to keep my ordination, but I was not optimistic that in Roanoke, Virginia, I would find any brother and church I'd be happy with. And I'm really happy, I was happy to, to learn about Central, and I'm glad to be a member here. I do think, though, that there are any number of things that this congregation is hanging on to from the past that needs to be reviewed and thought about. This thing about Jesus is my boyfriend music, which I can't sing because it makes me laugh, but, you know, I don't understand, for instance, why we don't use the hymnal supplement in worship. I mean, I don't know how that decision was made, but, you know, it's full of more, a lot of more contemporary pieces that I think would add a little more oomph to our worship service. I love the hymns we sing, I mean, I, I love the old hymns, they're, you know, they're me, but, but I do think we need to push ourselves a little bit in some of those directions that. I went through the supplement after I read this article, which I wasn't happy about. I only found two Jesus is my boyfriend songs that are potentially that way in the supplement. I mean, they're contemporary pieces here, but they're carefully chosen. So I, I think we always need to push ourselves, the older I get, the more comfortable I'm with, I am with the way things always were. But, but that's not a good attitude on my part, or, or any of our parts. I think we need to really reconsider any number of things, so.
Thank you, Marilyn, yes, Emily?
No, not. We talk about the Jesus is our boyfriend music. I have an eight-year-old granddaughter who, as soon as she gets in the car, says, I want to hear Lauren Daigle. She went to a Lauren Daigle concert, and it, she is now a superfan. And I, I think about, Lauren Daigle may not appeal to everyone, but if you really listen to the simplistic lyrics of her music, I can see why it appeals to people, and why it appeals to an eight-year-old. It's very simple, God loves me, he takes care of me, and then I think that she could be listening to a lot, you know, well, she wouldn't, we wouldn't let her, but, you know, she could be listening to things that were not appropriate, and you know, I, I think that it appeals to people because it touches their heart.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Emily.
You had called on Bob earlier.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm, I'm reluctant to speak because I really am having horrible internet issues, so if I go out, please forgive me. When we talk about people feeling intimidated, it's not just in the church that people feel that way. It's many of our social institutions. And I've found from working with, in the educational institution, that, and you've heard me say this before, people do not feel like they don't belong if they feel validated. And we've got to start validating some of the opinions that people offer that we might not agree with, or we might not really want to deal with, but that's the way they feel, and if, if we, they don't, they don't sense that we at least accept that and hear them, then they're never going to stop feeling intimidated. I've, you know, I've, I've been on the leadership team for a long time, and I've had, I would say at least five people during the course of my tenure, who have said to me, I'm not going
Well, Bob?
Maybe he'll come back on.
Hopefully he'll come back. While we're waiting for Bob to return, any other, other reflections or comments? We're at the 8:30 hour, and I want to, I want to try to stay true to our, my word about that. Folks, it's been good. Thank you again for participating in this studies, this study. Thank you for putting up with my facilitation. Bob?
I did cut out, I knew I probably would.
Did you have any more you wanted to add?
Well, I just want, I, I was just getting ready to say, we need to stop and think about how we interact with people on our commissions, to make them feel like they're having some value in being there.
Amen, 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 thank you for that, all right. All right, folks.
Thank you.
We are going to, yes.
Thank you, Eric.
Good job.
Thank you, all right. We're going to close with we're singing, the four of you are singing. George, Wendy, Nancy, and Bev, this is our closing.
Maybe Wendy should at least give a chord or something so that
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, so that everybody can sing in a key that's compatible for them, Wendy would get them started.
All right, Wendy. Do that again.
She's just giving a chord, George.
I know, but. Help us to help each other, Lord. Each other's cross to bear. Let each his friendly aid afford, and fill his brother's care.
Help us to build each other up. Our little stock and proof. Increase our peace, confirm our hope. And perfect our swine for love. Only our living head, lost and all. Those has made us free indeed, and spotless here below. And when the mighty work is wrought, receive thy ready bride. Give us in heaven a happy lot, with all the sanctified.
Amen?
Thank you all.
Good night, all, love you all.
The next Bible study, uh, next Bible study is March 9.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.